This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for Thursday, September 14th at 6:00 PM. And could we please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? There's a small flag right there. We're outdoors.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yes, there's a few more outside the window.
Perfect. Good, all right. So we have our meeting on tap here. We don't, we have open time for the public. I don't see anyone here. So basically, our focus tonight is a presentation from Community Paradigm Associates and Bernie Lynch and Sharon Flaherty in response to the request that we had put out for a Town Administrator search. And we managed to look at the choices and decide to select Community Paradigm to be our consulting firm. So I'm Chris Fowles. I'm the chair. And I'll just have everybody introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Dan LaBalle.
All right.
Yeah.
You look good.
Stephen Johnson, I serve on the Select Board. And along with Dan, we also serve on the Planning Board.
Yep, yep.
And John Oliver, Vice Chair of the Select Board.
Very good. Nice to meet all of you.
Yep, and we've got one of the Joy Pipers coming. And so as soon as she comes in. But anyway, so what I think what we wanted to do was kind of, you know, we've got your proposal in front of us, and we wanted to just kind of run through and I guess talk about this being the kickoff meeting, but then figure out just more clearly, you know, what steps we need to be doing, what you're going to start with doing. And I know you've already got a questionnaire out the door, et cetera. So just to kind of look at that, I was assuming we'd have, you know, like maybe a half an hour. I wasn't assuming this would be a very long meeting. Since this is a special night for us, we usually meet on Tuesday night. So we corralled everybody for tonight to kick this off. So if you would like to maybe just walk through some of the key highlights of the proposal and how you plan to work with us. And I think I had told you on the phone that we decided as a group that the Select Board will actually be the quote unquote "search committee" on this end. We had talked about maybe having a broader town department and public, you know, a larger committee. And we finally decided that we'd rather just keep the five of us as the main committee to work with you when we get to the finalist interviews, but that we would engage some sort of a listening session, public session, to get any input from others that are not on the Select Board, that might have some thoughts about the kind of profile we're looking for. So that's kind of it. And that we had chosen out of your proposal, there were the two options that I think we were looking at the panelist proposal. So to have you guys pull together a professional panel and do that work.
With one modification.
And maybe, yeah, a modification, John? Yeah?
Just the, when you talk about the semifinalists and then the finalist interviews, I'm thinking, you know, the interview before selecting the final two or three to come forward, when you're still doing your professional panel to do it, but we wanted to know if one and no more than two Select Board members could be on that, even if it was just a listening session. We don't want to, we don't want to limit the pool by requiring everybody to announce their candidacy just by applying, by having all of us on. Does that make sense?
Sure. Let me, let me just briefly, and I know you have this all probably in front of you and, you know, and we want to do this expeditiously as possible tonight, but we're willing to stay as long as you want, but we don't want to take up too much of your time. The, just, you know, by way of background, you see our resume and as you see our background, I think, you know, I always like to note that we have done, at this point over the last six or seven years that we've been doing this type of work, we've done over 100 town administrators, town managers, city manager recruitment, pretty much all here in Massachusetts. One in Rhode Island, and one in New Hampshire that we worked on. And everything else is right here. So I like to think that you made the right choice in going with us because we're the most active recruiting firm in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we, in doing that, we've developed a process that is pretty efficient in the way we walk through, and that's what I'm going to walk you through in a moment, of how we do this. Having said that, we tweak it to match up as much as possible. We are willing to tweak it as much as a community wants because we want the community to feel that they're comfortable with the process itself and the candidates that they have. It is very, I have to say this at the outset, and I think I noticed this in our proposal, it's a very competitive market right now for town administrators everywhere. Chris, I think you and I talked about this, that over the last four or five years, two-thirds, over two-thirds of the communities in Massachusetts have turned over to the town administrators and town managers. It's just a staggering number that has taken place. It's the, you know, and this has been, it's actually been going on now for about seven or so years. It coincided very nicely with our deciding to start doing this as a business. But it's essentially referred to early on as the Silver Tsunami. It is still that. All of us Baby Boomers that are getting out of the workforce are opening up all of these positions. And there isn't necessarily another group of people coming up from behind that are interested in being in municipal government or being town administrators. The pandemic only sort of magnified that a bit. So that's where we are, and that's where our, that's why I just wanted to sort of lay the foundation and take any questions you have related to that as we get farther into this, is to, you know, the challenge that we have ahead of us. The challenge is magnified a bit by your location in the state. You know, you're not in an area of high population density that has a lot of people out there that might be interested in these positions. And you have a number of cities around you that don't necessarily create town administrators and town managers. So we've got that, those issues that we have to work through in terms of recruiting candidates for this position. But I feel comfortable. We've been doing some good work out in that area of getting candidates, working with communities, being innovative and finding candidates. Myself and one other member of the Community Paradigm team are active and teach in the Suffolk University Mass Municipal Graduate Certificate Program. We've got a number of people. We actually had a course that we offered, or a program we offered up in New Hampton a few years ago now, I guess it was four years ago. And we did that, and we came across a number of people that are, might be potential candidates. We've done some other searches in the region that sort of crossing over all different counties that we have out there, Hamden, Hampshire, Franklin, and even Berkshire, that, you know, I think we can draw upon as our pool. So, you know, we feel, we feel we're well positioned, best positioned probably of any firm that you've chosen to work with you on this. But it's something we, we're going to have to work with you, trying to identify different options for you to fill this position. You know, you've had a town administrator in place now for a good period of time that I think is, by all accounts, has done a good job for you. So the town's in a good position that we can hopefully build upon that.
Yep.
If I could, maybe just to sort of help us through this, I know you love to look at me all as we go through this, but maybe if I could share a screen with you to sort of talk you through each one of the steps along the way, if that's all right?
I think you can do that. Do you want to do that, Ed?
My turn.
It's highlighted in here. Oh, it's already on. Okay. It was already set to. Screen share. Perfect. Good.
So, you know, and I can, I can speak to this from the standpoint of, you know, this is sort of a flow chart that coincides or ties in with what we, what we gave you as a, as a plan moving forward. We break our process down into four steps, if you will, or four, I guess, phases. Preparation, recruitment, review of applications, initial interviews, and the Select Board decision-making process. We are now in the preparation and recruitment phase, obviously. We're having this introductory meeting to review the process. We're a couple weeks, I would say, behind where we initially, you know, with the timeline that we gave you in the proposal. We estimated the start on the week before. We're a little bit behind that. But that's not, we can try to make that time up to still have someone, you know, that you can make a decision on by the end of November, the beginning of December. That shouldn't be a problem. I know that Ed is planning to retire and leave at the end of December. I think we can, we should be able to still work with that. There might be a week there that maybe it has.
I think, Bernie, looking at, looking at the chart you put in the proposal, we're actually only like a week off because you started us off at 9:00, 4:00, and here we are basically, you know, maybe 10 days off. So not too far off.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, yeah, I don't mean to, you know, I guess I just want to say that we're still, in my mind, we're still on target to have you getting someone in place, if I say in place, actually in the job by the beginning of January. Okay? So I don't think we're, I don't think we're off at all, but I just wanted to sort of flag that, that so that we have, when I start talking dates, that we can, we understand what we're, what we're looking at. So we're having this introductory meeting to sort of explain all this. The consultation with the Select Board, we think it's most advisable to do that one-on-one. It gives us sort of everyone a chance to participate in the process and tell us what they're thinking of. And what we're really interested in is what are the challenges and opportunities facing the town of Southampton? What do each, what does each individual member of the board want to see for skills and attributes of the new town administrator? And that's it. You know, we just want to get a feel for you, what you're looking for. And simultaneous to that, we are gathering supporting information. We grab that from the Division of Local Services or from materials that are posted on your website or other information that we might have. We do start off with at least a good understanding of the form of government with the work that we've already done for the town of Southampton. So, you know, and we, as you noted, we've already sent out a questionnaire to the department heads, and I think we've already, Sharon, how many responses did we receive?
As of now, I think I have about six and five or six right now. And I already have some discussions, telephone discussions set up for early next week with a couple of department heads.
So we've already, you know, sort of gathered, started gathering that information from the department heads of what they think is important for us to know about their departments and about the town, about the role of the administrator. We have built in this, I refer it to here as the optional, but clearly you want to do this. It's community consultation, a community forum. We do a couple of different, we do this a couple of different ways, and sometimes we do both. Pre-pandemic, we did it basically one way. We would do a community forum. We would show up in a room and we'd have people talk to us about those same questions of what are the issues facing the town, the opportunities and challenges, and what people want to see in the town administrator. We had to sort of shift gears on how we did that during the pandemic. If people started moving to Zoom meetings, interestingly, we got a higher level of participation with Zoom meetings than we did with actual in-person community forums. We would have very large communities where we'd have half a dozen people show up for a community forum. Once we got into Zoom forums, we started getting more people. So, you know, I think we can do it either way. We can sort of work with you on that. The other thing that we can do, that we have done, again, it sort of came out of that period when people weren't meeting in person, is we started doing community surveys. That's another option for us. It's not a, you know, it's just a matter of us putting the survey together, sending it out to you to put on your webpage. It is a web-based, it's a Google Form document, so people have to, people would have to do it online, or somebody would have to help people do it. It's not, it's not a paper version necessarily of that. But that's something you can think about, we can talk about tonight or at the subsequent.
I think, if I can just jump in there, I think one of the, one of the reasons why we brought that up initially, that we wanted to do that, is we wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to have their voices heard. Whether or not we choose to listen to that is a different story, but we wanted an outlet for folks. And from my point of view, I want to make sure department heads are heard. And the fact that you already have four or six responses, I forget how many department heads we have to start with, but.
Thirteen?
Yeah, that sounds like 50% right there. So if you get a few more, that eases my concern a little bit. So then almost the survey to buy, to keep the process going.
Well, survey or the Zoom meeting, I mean, you know, if there's others, you know, either one. I mean, I think we can talk about that. And just for two seconds, I'd just like to introduce Joy Piper, who just came in, our other Select Board member, so Bernie and Sharon.
Sorry, I'm late.
That's good.
Joy, nice to see you. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so anyway, we can, we can, we can do a forum. You know, some people don't, some people don't necessarily have access to computers, they don't like working with computers, and, you know, so they may want to participate in community forum, Zoom or otherwise. You know, Zoom is, is helpful in that it makes scheduling easier, I will say particularly for us, because of the commuting issues. But we, I'm willing to work with you on that. And, you know, we don't necessarily have to, our goal, our goal, as you see, leading up to all of this, consultation with you individually, the discussions with the department heads, the community consultation, it's geared towards developing a position profile. And I think we, I think we gave, we gave you a copy of the position profile that we had done, I believe, for South.
South Headley. Yep. Got that, yep.
And, you know, just to give you an idea here, and I know that you had, you had a similar document put together for you the last time.
Right. And I will say, because we're also recruiting for a fire chief, we've actually kind of put together a profile of the town, not so much, you know, this is, this is more reflective of the person and what you've given us for Southampton, but we do have another sort of a background document on the town that we could tweak a little bit to make it more, more generic to the town and not specific to the fire department, and that might be helpful too, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, what we tried to do is we tried to talk a little bit about the town, a little bit about the challenges, about the form of government, we talked about the, the exact, you know, specific position, we talked about the challenges and opportunities that the administrator would be facing, and we talked about the ideal candidate. But if you have something else that you'd like to send on to us, that you think would be helpful to us in pulling that together, now I think we do, we try to build a lot of hyperlinks into our documents to drive people to other documents. And we try to be, make it an all-encompassing position profile. So, but I'm going to say that if you, community consultation doesn't, it's nice to have it happen before that's completed. Our goal was to have that completed by the beginning of October. You know, we're still looking at within that first two weeks of October. And so if we can do that community consultation before then, that's preferred. But that doesn't mean that we can't, we do continue to do some of this consultation as we go through the process because it would be helpful to everyone as we do the interviews of either the semifinalists or the finalists. So, so in terms of, in terms of scheduling this, we can kind of figure all that out.
And I think I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't want the community, the scheduling of the community consultation, however we decide to do that, whether by survey or by Zoom, I wouldn't want that to hold the whole process up. So there's got to be something that's sort of simultaneous, I would hope. In parallel.
Right, right. So, but again, our goal is to get this, this document together because we want to be, we use it as, we use it in two ways. We use it as a marketing tool for the position recruitment. You know, we send this out to people, we drive people to it on our website. And by the way, we get, our website gets, and Sharon, you'll have to, you monitor this more closely than I do. I think we're getting three to 4,000 hits a month on our website. So we have people from all over the state and all, very frankly, all over the country that watch our website if they're interested in being a town administrator in Massachusetts. And so that's where we put these profiles. We also send them out or send out position announcements that are similar to those to above 400 people on our, in our database, which includes all of the town administrators in the state, as well as their assistants and other members of the management association, and then a whole group of other people that, you know, have sort of made their way onto our database because of their interest in being this, this line of work. So, but, and then the second way we use the, the profile is to help us narrow the field down by assessing candidates, how well they match up to the priorities that you have as a Select Board, with you guys, the issues, you guys, the skills. So that's how we use these, these brochures. But we want to make sure we've got this right. So once we finish this, we will be sending it on to you and having another meeting like this where you can say to us, you got it? Hopefully that's what you'll say. But you may say, you got it, but we'd like to push a little bit on one item or another item as to what the priorities are of the board as a whole. So we're going to, we're going to review this profile with you again, probably at the beginning of November, I think it should be beginning of October. And then we begin advertising recruitment. We said, we, we don't just post this position. We, we go out, we've got that database, we go through that, and start contacting people, trying to drive people to this position. So we'll be in touch with everybody we know out in that area, or people we know in the Commonwealth that might be interested in breaking into the business. Geography is an issue. I raised it already. People don't, you know, people like to look for positions around where they live. So we need to identify those people in, you know, Hampshire, Coming that would be interested in. And I think, you know, we can, we can drive up to Franklin, down to Hampden, maybe up to the beginning of Berkshire to see if there's people that would be interested in this position. But, you know, in any event, that's how we go. But we tend to have our recruitment period last about four weeks. So using that as a guide, I would see us getting our resumes in hand at the beginning of November or thereabouts. We would go through a review of those, sort of focusing on the different tiers of candidates, those that meet the qualifications, those that don't meet the qualifications, those people that sort of in between. And the people who do meet the qualifications, that do, you know, that we would identify as the ones that we really should be focusing in on, those are the ones that we will send to a professional panel. Our professional panel will consist of former town administrators, as well as, you know, and I'm a former town city manager. But, and so I'll be likely to be participating in that as well. But we have a number of people that you can see in the Community Paradigm roster that work, that are listed. And then we have another group of people that, you know, work with us that don't necessarily get their name on our roster, but that we would draw upon to, to help us interview and select these. And that brings us to the question of a board member or two board members participating. We've never had that asked of us before. We've had board members on screening committees before. We've never had board members on panels before. I don't have a problem. I think it's helpful to have that, the board member, one or two board members of all, to sort of see what the field looks like and to give us some sense. I just need to work through, or you need to work through, we need to work through any of the statutory requirements regarding the open meeting law. If it's a screening committee, there is language in statutes or in the Attorney General's rulings on that that talk to us about how that's to be handled. A professional panel is basically us making that selection of semifinalists and then finalists to bring to you. We have to figure out how we would have a board member or two involved in that. But again, I think it is valuable to have, and I'll be happy to work with you on that as well.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. I was going to say, maybe, perhaps we should reconsider that, under the, under the fact that it may, those members who are part of that panel.
Put yourself on the book.
May, may start to feel biased towards certain candidates through that screening process, whereas if they hold off until the regular involvement of the Select Board, they won't have that pre-bias towards candidates. And it may allow us, you all to move faster as well.
And what, my thought too would be that, you know, depending on how you, you feel about this, given that you happen to have that presence, maybe there's at least some level of communication, you know, with, with us or myself as a chair or whatever, just to say, okay, we've got, you know, 12 semifinalists and we're going to be interviewing and our goal is to get down to, you know, whatever. Or you might give us a sense of the, the quality of the candidates that you've received, you know, resumes for, something like that, that might, I don't know.
That's an op, that's certainly an option for us. You know, so again, communities handle this all different ways, and we work with everyone to sort of make it, make it work. But that's, that's a, that's an option that, you know, we've done, I have done that on a bit more of an informal basis, and I'm happy to do it on a more formal basis, this sort of consultation as we go through this, so I keep you up to date.
I think we can figure that out as we go along, probably.
Well, exactly. We don't need to make that decision now.
Right.
That won't, that won't need to be done until the beginning of November, at which time we'll make that, make that happen.
Okay.
So we've got some time to figure that out. But my goal is to bring, my goal is to bring you, well, I'm going to leave my goal out. I want to leave your goal. You know, my, my goal is to bring you a great candidate that you could hire. But you may want to see three people, you may want to see five people. Five gets, I'll tell you now, five gets tricky because five people then have to expose themselves publicly to the candidates. And that may happen, you know, some people may not want to do that because they've only have the 20% chance of being appointed. Whereas if you had three people, you know, you've only got a 33 and a third chance of getting, you do have a 33 and a third chance of getting. The other, but the risk of three is if you lose one, then you're down to two. And if you lose two, then you're down to one. And when I say lose, people get cold feet. This is another issue that's become exacerbated in the last year or two, is people get cold feet at any job that's out there. And, you know, you've got any HR person, is this whole ghosting thing that goes on where people suddenly disappear or they are at least good enough to withdraw, you know, formally. But you don't want, you don't want to be just out of one candidate.
Right.
But again, we do, we do roughly, you know, we're into phases here. We're into the initial interviews part of this. We do those interviews, they last about an hour, whether we're working with a committee or whether we're working with a professional panel. We try to touch upon the qualities that you're looking for in this, in this, in the person that you want for this position, for the town administrator. And our goal is to narrow that down to three or four people that, unless you tell me you need five, that we would bring forward to as finalists. Now, one thing that we do that is a little different than Now, one thing that we do that is a little different than some of the other firms, but I just wanted to, you know, let you know, is the three or four people that we bring to you, we do reference and background reviews upfront. There is some, some people wait until they're just the last person, that, you know, the one you pick. That's very awkward. We'd rather know upfront if there's problems with anybody. But beyond that, we think it's helpful to have some information about the candidates that we can give to you publicly. Now, that is going to mean that we're not going to be, you know, if someone has a problem background, they're never going to make it to the board. We're going to flag that right upfront and tell you, there's a problem with one of our candidates, and there'll be some communication. But what we try to do is, and the best way to describe this is, our interviews with semifinalists are about, as I said, about an hour long. Our reference reviews, and Sharon handles most of those, Sharon's background is primarily in journalism. She knows how to hit people and talk to them at length and have them tell you things that you never thought you would tell anyone. And so she has people to tell her about these candidates. And what we're interested in is what their skills are, what their work style, decision-making, management style is, what types of projects reflect that information. And we get into that, so we end up spending 30 to 60 minutes, or she does, I don't. Sharon or a couple other people end up spending 30 to 60 minutes with each one of the references. So we spend more time with the references than we actually do with candidates at the front end. And then we give you a report, and so we'll be giving you a report probably in the, you know, last part of November with the finalists that includes that reference information. And then we work with you on the interviews of the finalists, and, you know, those will probably, again, last about an hour, maybe a little bit more. We can, when we get closer to that, we can talk about any additional steps you want to include in the process. You want them to come up and spend a day or, you know, half a day touring the town, meeting with people. Do you want the candidates to have some type of one-on-ones with the board members? Some do, some don't, there are pros and cons. And then there's going to be a vote by the board. Obviously, you know that already, where the board's going to have to make a selection, and we'll help you through all of that, and we'll, and then you'll have this negotiation of a contract. So those are the steps along the way here. But again, my anticipation is, you know, we will have, assuming everything goes smoothly, we will have you having a candidate that you've chosen by the beginning of December that will begin as a new town administrator beginning of January. So I've gone through that, and now you put it, it's on your agenda for presentation, and all you have to do is say, "Presentation" to me, and I'll talk forever. So, you know, I guess it's most important now is to take your questions and your comments, and then over the course of the next week, I guess, have Sharon talk to each one of you individually.
Right. Great. Anybody have some quick questions? Yeah, John, first of all.
Just my, first question I have is just based on your history or knowledge that you know of doing this process in town administrators, based on our geographic location, our population size, and that, are you comfortable that we can get a qualified candidate in and around the $110,000 number that we have in the placeholder? Is that too high, too low, right on the spot?
It's probably close, it might be, I haven't really, I'll be admit, I, we haven't done a lot of salary survey work out right around you, right there. I would say you're very, you're very close. We might have to go up just a little bit.
Hardly go with South Hadley, because they said 140 was their max.
Bigger town.
Yeah, I understand, but they got candidates, and I just want to know, of those candidates that they were pulling in, what were they looking for, what type of range?
South Hadley?
Yeah.
I think they ended up, you know, I think they ended up hanging above that. I think they, I think Town Administrator Wong is above that.
I'm just trying to stay in the ballpark.
Because, I mean, it'd be curious, or I'd be curious, I don't know that, you know, I know what the limitations of town are and that, but this is all going to be happening simultaneously to when we're setting the next budget.
Yeah.
And just feedback for you guys, is we picked that number because we felt that, no, that wasn't, it was the fire chief.
Yeah, that's the fire chief.
Yeah, never mind. So if we need to make an adjustment, it'd be good that, whether we do it or not is a different story, but it'd be nice to just know that going into the budget session.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we'll do is, before we meet with you again at the beginning of October, we'll have some salary information from that area.
Okay.
Salary information. You know, giving you a size, your location, et cetera. We'll get that information. You know, your, I won't say it's your neighbor, but not too far from you, the town of Southwick will be going up soon as well.
Yeah. He's retiring in March, so I became aware of that.
Yeah. So.
April 1st, you'll be able to go back to work.
Well, actually, I had the conversation with Carl. Carl was talking to her, I was retiring, he thought I would replace him at Southwick.
Yeah, that's Ed in the background, if you can't see him, I'm not sure if he's here.
I couldn't see, I didn't know where Ed was. I thought I said nice things about him though.
You always have.
I know, I have, so.
No, I think, yeah.
I think he was about to give us the number.
Yeah, no, if you had some ideas on the Southwick, you were gonna say?
Yeah, so we'll get some information on that, and some of the other communities out that way, you know. Some of the communities to the west of you there, you know, it's sort of, they get very small, the communities can get very small if you head out that way.
Right.
And we'll have to look at, I think Hadley, I think, I think Hadley's probably about 120.
We can compare ourselves in size to Hadley.
Yeah, Hadley, Granby.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but we'll be working on that over the course of the next couple of weeks as well, if we do this.
Yep.
That's one of the lines of what my comment was going to be. I want you to start thinking about how to make Southampton, what are the differentiators you're going to put for Southampton, understanding this difficult and complex job market we have. If I were going to phrase how I would say Southampton is a differentiator for someone who's looking for something that's, a town that's up and coming, we have a lot of growth going on, we have a lot of new developments in terms of the municipality itself. So there's a lot of opportunities for themselves to be challenged and to really make a positive impact on this town. So if someone who's looking, is energetic and wants to really be involved, this is a good town for them. So that's one way to present it.
Yeah, and that's exactly the type of information that we'll do the one-on-one, that's what we want. I mean, obviously, we're going to, I've only had one community that we work with, Sharon knows where I'm probably going with this story. When we did the profile, I did speak to a member of the board following it, and they were very disappointed with what we wrote because they felt that we made the town look too good. So our goal is to really lay out all of the strengths and opportunities that a community represents, and I know that you began, I said at the outset, I think Southampton's on an upward trajectory, and it's a lot happening out that way, and it's in great shape, and I think that's the message we have to send out there.
Okay. So I think, you know, just to sort of, you know, wrap this up a little bit, what are the next steps? You've sent out the questionnaires to the town department heads, and I'm glad to hear that you're getting some of those back already, and I know you sent one out to Ed himself, so you've got, from his perspective, I think, what the town administrator job is all about from his perspective, or, so I think that's a great start. What do you need from us? You need, I could give you email addresses so you can schedule our time one-on-one, or...
That's exactly, that's exactly what I need. I need us to, you know, you'd get us the contact information for each one of you, and we'll be in touch. If you can get that tonight, we can have an email out tomorrow that sets up meetings for this weekend or next week.
Okay, I can do that. And then I guess a question, if you could possibly just send us or send me this flowchart, I'd like to have it up on our website so that the residents could kind of get a sense of the process.
Yeah, absolutely. If everyone's done with the, this now, it'll bring us to access, we don't have to look at that.
Yeah, that's great.
Now you need to look at me. So, but yeah, we'll, I'll send that out. As soon as we're done here, I'll send it.
Okay. Anybody else have other questions or on this part? I think at this point, I think this is a good, good beginning for us, and I think as we, you know, get to be able to talk one-on-one, we'll give you some ideas. We've obviously got people that are on at, you know, different lengths of time, having been on the select board, and have got, you know, an old perspective or a new perspective, and so, you know, you'll probably get a good range of answers, I think, in terms of what we're looking for, tied in with, you know, the various responses you're already getting from the questionnaires. So I think that would be great.
Yeah, yeah. Now, we're anxious to, you know, we're anxious to get out on the street on this, and, you know, we've already started sort of compiling a list of potential candidates that we can reach out to.
And one thing just to note, we usually meet on a Tuesday evening, our regular meetings, so just so you have the dates for whatever scheduling, if it happens to coincide or we need another meeting in between time, which we might, I mean, I think we're committed to not slowing down the process. So our next regular meeting will be September 26th, and then...
Every two weeks.
October 10th and October 24th. Those are our regular Tuesday night meetings, so if we need one in between on a Tuesday night, you know, whenever it's called for in the process, we can work around that. So every two weeks we meet, basically.
Yeah, I would hope that, I'm hoping that we can try to get this wrapped up for you. 26th might be a bit of a stretch, so I might ask for a meeting on the 3rd, I know that's not a regular meeting.
Okay. We can hold that as a thought, yep. October 3rd.
I should have, I think Sharon and I will need to talk a little bit, but I guess the other question is, the community consultation, what your thoughts are on that. Didn't talk about when that would take place.
Yeah. Send out the form, let's do that. Let them voice their opinions there.
But when?
When.
It's a parallel process that can occur, I think in your flowchart, you can get it started at the same time you're doing interviews with us. So I don't see anything, sending out a draft of what those questions may be to us.
Yeah, I would just say, to kind of echo Dan, move along with the Zoom forum, to do it that way, just please do not schedule it out on Tuesday night when we regularly meet. So if we want to, you know, kind of audit the forum, we can do that.
Sure, okay, so you want us to work probably with Ed on setting up a date for a community forum? Is there a particular time of day, or sort of, you want to do this in the evening?
Yep.
Zoom forum?
Yeah, whoops.
Gotta talk faster, people.
Too many questions. Okay.
You got just that, community forum in the evening, not on a select board night.
That's why I make meetings quicker.
Anybody got a phone number, or we got a phone number, we can call them back here.
Well, actually.
You did tell me 45 minutes, and you're at 46.
I know, but I wanted to plug in, yeah.
I'm comfortable with all of this, do you need my phone list? I'm comfortable with that.
Do want to vote. So while we're getting this squared away, and we come back to it maybe, I have one thing which is just under any other business. I had told you that I was going to look for, or have a follow-up meeting with a person who seemed to be interested in being on the finance committee, and we have in the package is a person I had talked to, and his name is Douglas Hamel. He's been in town for about three years, he's got quite an extensive background as a certified public accountant, some 16 years with tax accounting and basically a tax manager, audit manager kind of person. And he's willing to step up and be involved with the finance committee until the next election in May, so I would like to do that.
Motion to approve Douglas Hamel to the finance committee term to expire upon the next municipal election.
Okay.
Second.
All right. And I would make just one caveat on that, on the application, by the time that got in today, Lucy wasn't in the office, she had left a bit early, so this is just pending, Lucy's checking that he's a registered voter, but he's on the street list, so I'm pretty sure he's a registered voter.
Is that who it's with? Is it Liam Hamel?
No, no, different people, I think. Lives over on Sokey Circle.
Got a couple of young kids.
Yeah, a couple of young kids. Pretty new to town, anyway. So we'll just have Lucy double-check on that he's a registered voter, just so we have that box checked. But with that, we'll get him sworn in, and then I think, John, if you guys were going to do a finance committee meeting?
Yep.
But that would be good. But, so with that, I think we have a motion and a vote, and a second. Could we all have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, perfect.
I have the same platform, so just in tucking your passport.
You got it, yeah, we can hook him back up here.
Just a point to know that this municipal provided equipment has a battery that only has one hour and 20 minutes.
You must have had it offline earlier today.
No, I did not.
Oh, okay.
Just trying.
All right, well, we just voted in on the finance committee person, Ed, in your absence, pending Lucy's.
Then you made it conditional upon the participation of the registered voter.
So with that, we'll just get these guys back for a second if they haven't gone away, just to wrap up and say goodbye, but I know you have to run to an open space meeting, so.
They usually last no more than an hour, so they're holding something for me to address.
Yes, all right, we'll hop down then, yes.
Thank you.
And I will get you the feedback on the thing you sent me, too, which I didn't get to today.
Great, thanks.
So we'll just see if we can tune into them for a second, or we can just get them on the phone, which is easier, I don't know. We may have to still call them and have them, there's a phone number on here, is there?
That's what I'm looking for.
Address, I want to see a phone number.
I haven't got one.
What's your crack phone?
That's not helpful.
They have a phone number on here on their letterhead.
I know, that's weird. Well, they'll see the limitations of a small town. Whoops. Shoot, maybe look him up on...
I got a number I'm calling, but it's not checking, it says Wi-Fi. Does this thing actually work?
It does. Well, he's got it plugged into his computer though. Oh, bing, call. What?
Hello, this is Curry Legion, 978-621-6733.
Johnny, come on, buddy.
Is that 6733 that's on there?
6733, yes. Oh, it's a form. I have, yeah, we don't have a phone number anywhere for that one, so that's one too many to get, obviously.
Well, his direct number is 978-621-6733.
Is it on there?
It's on the menu, here we go.
That's his desk.
That's what you're just trying to...
It's underneath his email address.
Yeah. Okay. So we're connected, but I'm sure they dropped, oh no, they're there, perfect. Oh, we're back, we're back. All right, all right.
The straits of a small town.
Yeah, that's the limitations of a small town, a better... Yeah, that's the limitations of a small town, the battery died.
And you can look for two, two phone messages from me, one to your cell phone and one to your office.
They're mining department involved.
Okay, good. Well, with that, yeah, so like, we just wanted to at least kind of wrap it up and say goodbye, but if there's any final point on your point.
What I'm, what I'm looking at is, what Sharon and I were just talking about as I was trying to get in touch with you is, we can, Sharon, help me out, that's an issue. We can do a Zoom, how about if we do a Zoom forum? I want to get my calendar up. What if we did it a week from Monday, the 25th? Does that, does that work for people?
It's younger, I don't know if that is at all.
So we could do it the 25th, you're meeting on the 26th, so that doesn't work.
Right. Let's just see what's on the 27th, I'll hand on the other schedules.
I can.
27th, the Wednesday, is looking right now, there's nothing scheduled as I look at mytown.gov.
Does the Wednesday work for you guys, the 27th?
27th would work.
Yep, done.
Let's, let's do that. That, right now, nobody's grabbed it for another meeting and if, if it is, it'll be maybe a, I don't know.
Planning board.
Planning board, when do you guys meet?
The next one's Wednesday, it's seven o'clock.
This, this Wednesday?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, who knows? We cancel a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, so, okay, let's, let's go for the 27th and probably, I don't know, 6:00, 6:30 timeframe? People are used to 6 o'clock meetings pretty much around here.
Yeah, if you do 6 o'clock.
At least, all of us that are on committees are used to them, I don't know, so I think, I think 6 is probably good, yeah.
We may do the community forum.
So, let me ask you a question. When, when we do this, like right now.
Ah, okay.
Is your, is this meeting right now being televised or is?
It's recorded, it's, it's recorded, so it'll be, it will be put back up.
Uploaded.
It will be uploaded, yeah. Joey was just suggesting that we might make this closer to 7 rather than 6, so Joey?
Yeah, when we did the, the community forum meetings for our housing trust to create a housing trust by law, we did it later in the evening for families who are doing dinner and whatnot.
Yeah, so for people that are just getting home from work and having to, you know, if we really want some of the others, other people that are not normally sitting around town hall, that really might give it a better timeframe, so maybe 7 o'clock.
Okay, so two options here. One is, if, if you're going to do that, if you're going to broadcast this afterwards, if we want to tape so that people can watch it afterwards, I guess my preference would be that you handle that, but I could, I could host this on our Zoom if that's easier.
Well, we, don't, don't we have recording capability on our Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would say we set it up on our Zoom, make you a co-host when it starts. That way we'll have the recording and we can upload it.
Perfect. Perfect. So what we'll do, what we'll do is, we will send you, Sharon will send out tomorrow a press release, web announcement, however you want to use it, that talks about the, the forum, what we're trying to accomplish with the 27th at 7:00 PM, and you just fill in the Zoom link information and we'll be good to go. You can get, you can send that out however you normally put it, so you can.
Sure.
Look at your website, social media, we'll, we'll get that information to you.
Perfect. Okay, sounds like a deal.
No heavy, no heavy lifting on your part.
Okay, sounds good. All right, good. Well, I think that's probably all we need for this evening.
All right, and then Chris, if you can, or Ed, I guess will be sending this out, but whoever's sending out the contact information. And then, Chris, I'll be in touch beyond talking to you about your thoughts on the position, et cetera, about when we'll be ready to send you out the profile. And we'll send that by email and get, we can get feedback ahead of time, we can make this all a very smooth process.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Great.
All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Good to meet both of you and we'll be talking to you. Thank you.
All right, good. Thanks, everybody. Good to see you again.
Thanks.
Take care.
Okay, so, thank you for that and I think that's all we have for business. We have our next meeting on the 26th. We have a motion to adjourn, I heard Joy and I heard John and, okay, let us call ourselves adjourned at 6:56.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.